Good evening. The February 22nd, 2018 City Council meeting is now called to order. Tonight, our prayer and pledge will be led by Reverend Mia Leventon, co-pastor, San Andres Presbyterian Church. Please rise.
Please join me in prayer. Almighty God, you have given us this good land as our heritage. Make us always remember your generosity and constantly do your will. Bless our land with honest industry, sound learning, and an honorable way of life. Save us from violence, discord, and confusion from pride and arrogance and from every sinful way. Make us who come from many nations with many different languages a united people. Defend our liberties and give those whom we have entrusted with the authority of government the spirit of wisdom that there might be justice and peace in our land. When times are prosperous, let our hearts be thankful, and in troubled times, do not let our trust in you fail. We ask all this through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business tonight is an election item, presentation of the oath of office to councilmember-elect of District 3, Angie Shepard.
Ray Wade.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
Duties of the office.
Of City Council.
Of City Council.
Of the city of Longview.
Of the city of Longview.
And the state of Texas.
The state of Texas.
And will.
And will.
Do the best of my ability.
Best of my ability.
Uphold the laws and constitutions.
Uphold the laws and constitutions.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Well, Ray, we got family here. Bring 'em up.
Yeah.
Family members, come up, get a picture. This is special. Come on up.
Please, family member, my sister, please come up. My son, my nephew, Rockman, please come up. And I also want to invite Ann Smeed up as well, my cousin AJ, come up as well. Come on up. Mrs. Smeed is really close friends of the family. Her and my mom known each other for years, and she's standing Ann as my mom tonight.
I'm coming up here.
Yeah, and Tyrone Horn as well.
Well, thank you very much. All right. Thank you, man. It's a privilege to have you here with us. I've known Ray since he was a wee little tyke, which shows my age. Ray has turned into an amazing young man with a heart of gold that will serve this district well and serve this community well. And Ray, we couldn't be more proud to have you as part of this council to carry on what we're doing and to continue the goal of making Longview the best place to live. So, welcome to this council, my friend.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, guys.
We are now to employee recognition. Tonight, we're going to recognize Longview Transit's 15th anniversary. March 17th will mark the 15th anniversary of public transportation in the city of Longview. Annual ridership of Longview Transit averages 245,000 persons per year and returns over 1.5 million taxpayer dollars to the city of Longview. Two individuals have been employed with Longview Transit since inception 15 years ago. Takeda Dudley started as a driver and has worked her way up to the Director of Operations. Clinton Williams started as a driver and has since held various positions within the organization. Unfortunately, Clinton could not be with us tonight. Mr. Lewis, would you please come forward? I don't know how many of y'all have ever ridden the Longview Transit bus, but if you haven't, you should. And I want you to know what a difference it's made for our community. I know when this took place 15 years ago, I was actually a part of that. It's been a long time, and it's been a great ride, and you all have done nothing but improve this for the citizens of our community with a service that is desperately needed in our community. So, we appreciate that so much. It's a pleasure to be here to say thank you personally because without the hard work of Scott and you all, this wouldn't be what it is today. And so, we thank you. We hope to see this continue. Did y'all catch those numbers? How many thousands of people ride the bus? How much dollars it brings back into our city and what a service it is? Because I can guarantee you, if you didn't have transportation and you needed a bus, this is what it's all about. And to have this available in our community is really special. I want to see it expand, continue to grow, to provide for the citizens that need this service. I appreciate you all very much. Scott, thank you so much. Thank you so much. Scott, I'd like to give this to you as well.
Longview Transit would like to recognize R&amp;K Distributors for their 10th year of sponsoring our Safe Ride Home program. Our Safe Ride Home program is on New Year's Eve, and it allows the citizens to have an option, a safe option, of getting behind the wheel and not having to get behind the wheel. We've got Corey Howell from R&amp;K and John Martin that we would like to present this plaque to. Basically, this allows us to bring out our drivers, a dispatcher, our maintenance team to be available on this night.
Do you all realize how special it is that R&amp;K does this for our community out of the goodness of their hearts? They offer a service that is desperately needed, and it's saved no telling how many lives. And so, we appreciate the dedication that you all have given to our community. John, Corey, thank you all for all that you do. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Awesome. Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Thank you so much. We're now to community recognition, and tonight in community recognition, I'm kind of kind of dovetail off what we just did. Tonight, I want to recognize someone that has really made an impact in this community in more ways than what we just talked about. This is a guy that answers the call. And what I mean by that is if you need something and you make a call, I have never heard him say no. And it's a terrible trait in his business because he gets bombarded with stuff from the community. But a guy that always is there is special. That means you can always count on him. And I'm talking about John Martin again. So, John, you might as well come on back up. Come on back up, buddy. Yeah. I know you had no idea about this either.
I wasn't paying attention.
I know. That's okay. I was telling how cool you are, what a great guy you are. But this guy right here does so many things with so many events that take place in our community that it's hard to even describe. From a personal standpoint, I've known John to be a kind, caring, wonderful guy to be around. I appointed him to the LEDCO Board a few years ago, and now he's a voting member of the LEDCO Board. He spends time and energy doing what we need to do for this community. And besides his business aspect that he is, we've just talked about how they give to our community over and over and over again. This is the kind of volunteer that we need in our community, and this is the kind of example that we need to set for our community. So, we appreciate that from the city of Longview. I appreciate it personally. Having gotten to know you has been a real pleasure and a privilege, and I just thank you for what you do and hope you continue doing what you do, John.
Well, it's worth the time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
So much. And Marissa, we appreciate you too. I know it's a family affair, but thank you for all that you all do. We're now to citizen comment. I have one speaker card. Mr. Jimmy Howell.
Good evening. I am Jimmy Howell, Neiman Marcus retired. In 1995, Neiman Marcus decided to move to Longview. We invited a large number of people to come with us, primarily managers and supervisors and even to director levels. Less than half of them made the trip citing quality of life was not what they wanted here in Longview. Since that time, I will tell you that Longview has made great strides. The bus ride over here originally, we could not find a route into the city that we wanted to take to show off the city. The city entrances look amazing now, all right? Parks were not where we needed them to be. You've stepped up. The city has stepped up. Lear Park is amazing. Kid Country is a destination. If you're out there, you see buses from all over East Texas driving in to take advantage of it. I am not an arboretum person. I will tell you that I do not know an elm from an ash from an oak. I will tell you that an arboretum is one of those quality of life things that will pay huge dividends in attracting the kinds of businesses and people that we need in Longview. I think if Neiman Marcus were relocating today and the arboretum was in place and Lear Park was in place and the entrances were in place, I think we could have attracted more people. And I believe going forward, this town has the opportunity to really attract quality people and quality businesses in with this investment. And it is an investment in the community. You've got a group of dedicated volunteers who are dead set that this is going to happen. This is their passion. They've already raised 1.7 million dollars. What they need right now is your buy-in, a signature on a document, a memorandum of understanding that says, "We back you. You can start construction. We want to see this happen. We believe that this will be a good thing for our city." Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you. We're now to present, well, I have no more speaker cards. Does any other citizens like to speak and fill out a card later? Very well. Thank you very much. Presentation items. Presentation for UT Tyler Strategic Plan, Dr. Mike Tidwell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council members. I really appreciate giving me the time this evening to share with you a little bit about what's going on at the University of Texas at Tyler and the LUC. Again, my name is Michael Tidwell. I'm the relatively new president of the University of Texas at Tyler, originally from Southern California, but got to Texas just about as fast as I could. My grandfather actually is from East Texas. In fact, this would be his 101st birthday year if he were still with us. And so, I do have some roots here in East Texas. And so, again, I do appreciate you giving me the opportunity to share a little bit about what we're doing at the university and how we'd like to be more of a partner for the city of Longview. One quick question. How much time do I have? Don't, you don't want to tell a professor he's got the mic for too long. I'll make it fast, okay?
Thank you.
Fast. And questions at any point in time would be more than welcome. When I arrived at UT Tyler, again, a little over a year ago, we immediately started the strategic planning process as is required for any new president of any UT. We're required to return to the Board of Regents within 12 to 18 months with a new plan and a new vision for our campus. It doesn't mean that what the campus was doing historically was necessarily the wrong direction, but it does mean that you were brought on for a reason. And that's the reason is because the Regents want to see a new direction, new growth, new opportunities. So, we immediately started the strategic planning process, and we utilized what we call an open source model, which just simply means that all faculty, all staff, all students were engaged in the process. It was not the traditional, very small committee of individuals that get together and think about the future of the campus. But as we have grown to, from one campus to now four campuses, Longview, obviously Tyler, Palestine, and now Houston, it was very important that all stakeholders have a say-so in the new direction of the institution. So, as we thought about long-term, who we want to be as an institution, this is the vision that the team arrived at. We want to be the primary educational and economic driver of all of East Texas. Now, when you think about what it means to be the primary educational and economic driver of all of East Texas, the first thing you have to think about is, well, what is East Texas? East Texas is a very large region of about 2 million people. We're above the size of the Austin city limit, if you will, metropolitan area. And when you think about what the University of Texas at Austin means, both educationally and economically, to the Austin metro area, that is what the University of Texas at Tyler wants to be to all of East Texas. It is a larger footprint, obviously, but population-wise, it's about the same size. So, when we think of being the education driver, we're thinking about not only K-12, but how do we impact K-12? We have a lot of great schools here in Longview and the surrounding communities, but how can the university partner with the school districts to ensure that our students are learning at the rate that they need to learn to move on into a college program and then progress from there to be responsible citizens? We want to be partners with school districts. When we think about what it means to be an educational driver beyond that, we also want to be partners with the community colleges throughout our region as well. Kilgore College obviously serves Longview and all the surrounding communities. They do a phenomenal job. We have a number of partnerships with Kilgore College, and we continue to expand our relationship with them on an annual basis, program by program by program. We want to be a partner. We want to ensure that we grow not just the influence of the institution of UT Tyler, but also the influence of Kilgore College as well. And as we do that, as they do that, we feel as though the entire region is going to get better. When we think about what it means to be a primary driver, that means that we want to be that influencer. But when we also think about what it means to be a primary driver, it also means being a primary partner as well. It doesn't mean that we're coming in to take over programs. What it does mean is that we're willing to partner and help grow programs where great programs already exist. When we think about what it means to be the primary driver of the regional economy, most people understand that. We feel as though the region has very strong infrastructure, both educationally, strong infrastructure in terms of transportation infrastructure with the airports we have in the region, strong infrastructure in terms of businesses as well. But how does the university partner with those businesses to grow their influence, to grow their sales, to grow their marketing campaigns so that they can achieve success? Because as they achieve success, you all know the tax base grows here in the city of Longview and throughout East Texas as well. So, we want to be a strong partner. If you've read the news recently, you know that we have since received a very sizable investment at the University of Texas at Tyler from John Soul Foods Corporation. They have decided to partner with our College of Business, and so, we have renamed our College of Business, the Souls College of Business. And we did that in recognition of the vision they have for what UT Tyler's College of Business can mean, not just to Tyler. We're headquartered in Tyler, but we are all of East Texas's university. When we think about what the Regents have in mind for the university, what they have in mind is that as the only UT in East Texas, we will have a very large responsibility for all of East Texas. You know, we have a strong healthcare partner as well in UT Health Northeast, which will soon partner with Ardent and ETMC to provide services throughout all of East Texas as well. So, when we think about where we're going and what we're doing and why we're doing it, it is to be of service to all of East Texas. So, we want to be that primary partner, that primary driver of all things educational and all things economic as well. Now, vision is typically long-term. Short-term, however, is what we call our mission statement. And our mission statement is built on four basic principles. We want to be of service to our students. We want to ensure that they are very successful. Now, when we talk about student success, we're talking about making sure that they are retained in college, that they graduate on time, and that they launch great careers. You'll notice I didn't say great jobs. You can get a job waiting tables, and there's nothing wrong with getting a job waiting tables. But if you graduate with a degree in finance or criminal justice or nursing, you probably want to work in that field. So, we're very in tune with students wanting to ensure that they are placed in careers. So, we have a number of initiatives that we'll be launching. I'll talk about a couple of those in just a moment. We're also heavily focused on engaging with our students. Being an institution that has a strong background and being kind of a commuter campus, again, we're now a full-fledged university with a number of programs, master's programs, and even doctoral programs now as well. And so, we want to make sure that we're engaging with our students in ways that they find to be of use and of value. The third piece is that we want to ensure that we are providing the level of research and interaction with the Regents' businesses and organizations that they are going to find useful. So, whether it be new partnerships with the SBDC, which we really do appreciate the region being a big part of our application to assume the responsibility for the SBDC in this region, we want to make sure that our faculty are engaged in research that's going to be of use for the entire region. The final piece is community engagement, which is tied to each of these. We want to make sure that the community knows that we are here, that we have resources, that we'd like to partner on grants and other opportunities, again, to ensure that we are of service. Our vision is to be for East Texas, again, what UT Austin is to the region of Austin. And so, it's going to take a lot of partnerships and a lot of intentional behavior to make that happen. So, a few more specifics, and can y'all see that okay? Great. So, when we talk about student success, again, we're talking about retention, we're talking about career placement, we're talking about graduation rates. And I think we can all agree that today's typical undergraduate student is a little bit different than the typical undergraduate student maybe 20 years ago. And so, it's a little bit more hand-holding, a little more attention that we have to provide for our students. So, we are designing what we call a concierge service or concierge approach to student success. Doesn't mean that we're washing kids' clothes and washing their cars and doing those kinds of things. What it does mean, however, is that we want to ensure that their educational needs are met at a very high level. And so, being attuned to that is going to be very important. The student experience or engaging with the students will be equally as important. So, making sure that there's a significant amount of economic development, not just around our Tyler campus, but about all of our campuses. You know that we have a phenomenal nursing program that we offer here at the LUC. We want to continue to grow that and also grow the influence of that program and the influence of the businesses around that program as well here at the LUC. We want to be able to enhance our facilities throughout all of our campuses and then broaden our diversity initiatives. And that's not necessarily talking about racial diversity or ethnic diversity, but it's talking about all diversity on our campus, all program diversity on our campus as well. Discovery, scholarship, or outreach is just simply a very fancy way of saying that we want to make sure that our students are engaged in research. Students that connect with faculty members, that conduct research projects, tend to be students who are going to graduate on time and be very successful. So, we want to make sure our students have opportunities to do that. And then, the creation of research assistantships is a great way to make sure that students have the financial resources they're going to need to complete school in an efficient and effective manner. And I've already talked a little bit about outreach and impact. That's going to be extremely important to us as we go forward as well. Our SBDC that we are proposing to operate here in the region will be a major focus for the university over the next few years, should the SBA be willing to allow us to operate that. So, we're really excited about that. So, a couple of key things that we'd like to do to collaborate, and these are just a few of our ideas. Obviously, we need ideas because we want to be a good partner. We want to make sure that the needs you feel are important are the needs that we are working with you all to address. We have a number of faculty members who actually work in Tyler that live here in Longview. We have a number of faculty members that work in Tyler that live in Palestine. I've mentioned our Houston campus a number of times. We run a very successful engineering program down in Houston in partnership with the Houston Community College. So, again, we're working to be of service to the entire region. But a couple of thoughts we have just to kind of get folks thinking about ways that we might be able to collaborate. Again, we want to be able to build academic programming that is of use to the businesses here in Longview and the surrounding communities. Now, we don't always know what those are. Now, I know you all are very familiar with Van Patterson. He's on the ground here, does wonderful work for us. Speak with him about what the needs are because if there's a need, we want to make sure that we are available to meet that need. We also, again, want to partner on economic development. Now, it's rare that you hear a university president talk about economic development. They tend to be very focused on their academic programs. But I recognize, having been a dean of a business school a number of times, growing up in very entrepreneurial household, that if the economy is not strong, then you'll graduate students out into unemployment. And East Texas has a significant problem with brain drain. The kids that grow up here in Longview, that grow up in Tyler, that grow up in Palestine, that grow up in Kilgore, if they're talented, they're going to get recruited to Houston and Dallas and New Orleans and some of the other larger cities throughout our region. It's incumbent upon us to make sure that we have a strong economy with wonderful organizations that can recruit our students right out of our programs and keep them here in our communities. We also want to be able to partner on grant opportunities. There are a number of grants that are available for organizations, whether they happen to be nonprofits or governmental in nature. If we're able to partner on those, we feel as though we can add a number of, a lot of value. We all have over 400 faculty throughout all of our campuses, doctorally qualified faculty members. So, we know we've got a lot of talent, and so, we'd be happy to partner where appropriate. And then, finally, again, as I noted before, we want to alleviate the brain drain. We want to make sure that talent from East Texas is educated in East Texas and stays in East Texas. When that happens, the entire community prospers, the entire region prospers. So, I promised to be short and quick. I was. Again, our vision is to be the primary educational and economic driver of all of East Texas. So, I appreciate your time today. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions, Dr. Tidwell? We thank you for your presentation, sir.
Thank you.
Have a great day. Now, for presentation on Hensley Park, Mr. Karen.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Mr. Bonds. I want to apologize, first of all, for not providing regular updates on the Hensley Park project. Excuse me. Although progress has been made, very little is actually currently happening, and there's not much to report. And so, although we do know that there are questions out there about what is going on, we haven't had the answers to those. And so, that's why we failed to update everybody. But we do want to take this opportunity to update everybody as to what has happened and where we are and where we feel that everything is going. So, as you can see on the screen, our adult softball league registration is actually doing quite well. And the reason I like to mention this is because we currently operate Hensley Park in a manner in which we always have. We have adult softball out there. We have our disc golf things going on. We have a pavilion. We have the restrooms. So, we continue to operate that facility as we have with all of our other parks. We were approached by a developer, SDI, about the possibility of retail development at Hensley Park. That's the site that they chose that they felt was most appropriate for the retailers that had approached them. And what we told them was they have to do three things, probably more than that, but essentially boils down to three different things. First, in the state of Texas, in order to... First, in the state of Texas, in order to relinquish a park property or remove that park designation, it has to go to a vote of the people. The second thing is, there can be no loss of use of the existing park. It's a popular park, it's well utilized, and we want to be able to currently serve the community in the use and aspects that we currently do. And then third, which may be just as important as the other two, is that the only person that we can deed the property back to is the Cargill family. So they have to get through all three of those hurdles prior to us relinquishing the park. So SDI set out to accomplish all of these. So they were very enthusiastic and they continue to be enthusiastic about the project. But in their enthusiasm, I think they were provided some false information as to how they needed to go about the process of everything. And one of those ways was in the actual development of the retail site as well as the new park site. And in that was the Army Corps of Engineer permitting. Not only did they have to get those permits, but they believed they could get a national permit, which doesn't require the number of reports and studies that need to be done. They had to get individual permits for each of those sites. Those typically take 12 to 18 months. And now that they do have those in hand, they're ready to move to the next step in the process. Well, we all know what has occurred within e-commerce. Okay, e-commerce has continually changed and there are a number of entities that are changing the way that the big box stores and retail development is occurring. Now you can shop on your phone, you can go pick it up at the store. What that did is that that's a shift in the market that they didn't anticipate two years ago. And so that's one of the things that the retailers are having to adjust to now, is figuring out, what is the best way we can provide that customer experience as we move forward? Because they don't want to be here for the next year. They want to make sure that they can be here long-term and meet the demands of the customers that they have. So that's essentially where we are today. In addition to the daily maintenance of the ball fields and everything, the city has invested over the past 10 years in retaining walls, drainage, we put new ball field mix on the fields, we continue to maintain it. We've put a considerable amount of investment in the past 10 years and will continue to operate it until such time that we have a different park and site and location. And I like to mention that because we've had a lot of emphasis on park improvements over the past year specifically with the comprehensive plan. Hensley Park was not identified in 2005, 2009, or 2015 park master plan. So the reason the projects that we have focused on over the past year is, this is not hanging over our heads, Hensley Park is not hanging over our heads, because we have other needs and wants that come prior to redevelopment of Hensley Park. We certainly recognize that Hensley Park needs to be upgraded, but at this time, we have other priorities that we feel need to be put forward. So SDI currently has an option and continues to have an option on the property with the Cargill family. They're enthusiastic about continuing the development of this and we believe that the city continues to be in a great position. And the reason I say that we're in a great position is because we currently have a park. We're currently operating that park. And if this development goes forward, we're going to have a $3.5 million new park that will be as good or better than what we currently have. And not only that, it will not be done with taxpayer dollars. So we're in a good position. We're excited about this moving forward, but if it doesn't, we'll continue to operate. If we have the opportunity to move forward with our park projects, we'll do so. But then, in a few years, when we feel the need is appropriate for us to redevelop Hensley Park, we'll do so at that time. So that's kind of where we are and I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Mr. Karen, I appreciate your presentation. I know there's been some inquiries in the community and it's understandable. But I want the community to understand that we are not the holdup in this situation. The city has given them every opportunity that we can and approved, or we can approve to move forward if SDI still chooses so. And I appreciate you also bringing up the fact that Hensley Park is still functional and operational as it always has been and it will continue to be. We're not, we're not, nothing's been put on hold because of this project. If this project were to come up next week, we'd say, great, move forward. If it comes up next month, we'd say, great, move forward. But if it doesn't ever come up, we're going to still continue to operate Hensley Park, just like we always have. And it's not holding anything up, as you mentioned, in our park master plan. So we're really in a no-loss situation here. If they choose to build us a brand-new park, we're going to take it and accept it. If they choose not to, we're going to continue to operate what we already have and continue to do upgrades as we feel necessary. Is that the kind of the gist of it?
Yes, sir.
So, you know, and I understand that, I wish they would have done it last year or two years ago, but that's not in our hands. We don't control the purse strings of SDI. When they get their finances in order and they want to move forward, we're going to certainly give them that opportunity if that opportunity is still there. And so...
The one thing I'll add, that SDI has had considerable investment already taking place. And I would imagine they want to have a return on that investment.
Of course they do.
And so they will continue to be diligent about moving forward with this project.
And I spoke with SDI this week and the president of their company, and they're very optimistic that this is going to continue to move forward. They've jumped through some hoops, there's no question, with the Corps of Engineers, which we don't have any control over that. That's not, that's not city business. But they're optimistic this is going to continue to move forward and see something happen hopefully very soon. But once again, that's in their hands, not in our hands. We're happy to assist them any way that we can and we'll continue to operate Hensley Park as it is being operated right now, with our citizens being involved in a great park. So I appreciate the update. Any questions, Mr. Karen?
Quick shameless plug, so regular registration for softball tomorrow and then two weeks we've got late registration.
Never a shameless plug, my friend, that's a good thing. Thank you very much. Where the public safety update?
Mayor Mack, council members, Mr. Bonds. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to update you tonight. This is going to be our last call for our March 19th through the 23rd Free Women's Safety Course. The class is filling up, we have just a few remaining seats. Anybody that's interested, we'd like to ask them to call 903-808-3388 to register for this course. The next one will not be until June. So have a few seats available and anyone interested in this course here, now's the time to register for the course. Able to bring to you tonight our crime statistics for 2017. I wanted to cover a little bit about our activity for 2017 to give you some background on what our crime statistics were for the year. As you can see, we've had significant reduction in crime across the board over the last year in 2017. I have it broken down into some different charts to kind of show you along with a five-year comparison on where we were at. Our persons crimes are crimes against persons. From 2016 to 2017, we've seen a 21.7% reduction in crimes against persons. And each one of the different types of crimes against persons, aggravated assaults, were down 25.6%. Sexual assaults stayed the same. And then our homicide rate dropped 30% this last year. Our property crimes, our total property crimes, were down 26.8% overall from 2016. Those crimes include larceny or theft, which we saw 29.1% reduction. Burglary, we saw 27.5% reduction. And motor vehicle thefts, a 4.8% reduction. And in robberies, we saw 16.5% reduction in criminal activity over this past year. Our response times for the year, priority one calls are calls that are in progress that need an emergency response. These types of calls are dispatched within 45 seconds. And as you can see with the blue line there, our response time from the time of the call to the time of arrival is four minutes and 18 seconds on average for 2017. We shoot for an under five-minute response time on priority one calls. Priority two calls are dispatched within three minutes. And on our priority two calls, we're at five minutes and 30 seconds. And on our priority three calls, that are dispatched within 10 minutes of receiving them, we're at eight minutes and 36 seconds on our response times. Little bit about our calls for service for 2017. As you can see, we answered 70,683 calls for service. That is down from 2016, in which we answered 74,710 calls for a 5.6% reduction in calls for service. But as indicated by the red line, our on-view or officer-initiated activity is up from 2016 to 2017 by 8.7%. But while our calls for service are going down, our officer-initiated activity is going And then one area, for 2017, our fatality accidents. We had 18 fatality accidents that resulted in 20 deaths. And as you can see in 2017, that's higher than the normal average. So we have an area there that we have to work on in our traffic safety this coming Total arrests for the year, we had 901 felony arrests and 4,569 misdemeanor arrests for a total of 5,470 total arrests for the year for 2017. Earlier today, I placed in your box a copy of our 2017 Annual Contact Report. This report is an annual report that we're required to do to provide to the governing body of the municipal government based on our traffic contacts. You have a copy. A copy will be on file in the library. A copy will be uploaded to our website and a copy is also on file with the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement. And after you've had a time to review your copy and the information in there, if you have any further questions, I'll be more than happy to answer those questions for you. So that's all I have for tonight.
Any questions for Chief Bishop? Thank you, Chief. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Chief Steelman.
Mayor Mack, members of council, Mr. Bonds. Man, where did that come from? Sorry about that. Thanks for the opportunity to update you on a few things that the fire department's had going on since our last meeting on February the 8th. I had the privilege this past Monday of promoting six individuals in our fire department to a higher degree of responsibility within the fire department. Two of those captains that promoted were Brian Vickery and Justin Jenkins. Two people promoted lieutenant, that was Rami Blaylock and Colin Waller. And two others promoted to the rank of driver engineer, that was JR Parker and Hunter Williams. So congratulations to each one of these as they continue to demonstrate that upward mobility in our department that keeps our department moving forward and strong. Had the opportunity earlier, since we last met, to spend a little time out with some kiddos at Elmar Preschool. We certainly want to give them a quick shout-out and thanks for welcoming us and having us in their facilities to spread the message of fire safety and fire prevention with the children out there. As you all know, the children and the elderly are two of the populations at risk from fire-related injury and death in our community. So the more of this kind of thing that we can do to reduce that number, keep that number low, is certainly an important mission for us. So I know a good time was had by all these kids. You know, anytime you get sparky out there in a fire truck, it's going to be a good time. So I know the kids asked some great questions and again, thanks to Elmar Preschool for letting us be a part of their day. You know, we've had a lot of rain in the last couple of days, there's still some more to come, so we certainly want to share the message of travel safety and encourage people to turn around and not drown. Don't try and attempt to drive through any mode of standing water anywhere you come across. And I will say that here in Longview, in Longview proper, we're doing fairly well. All of the rivers and tributaries and creeks are draining adequately, that we haven't seen any major backups. But I know out in the periphery, out in the ETJ areas, there could be some problems that are starting. And depending on how much more rain we get between now and what they're predicting for Saturday, we could see a little bit of localized flooding. So we certainly want people to be aware of that as they're traveling. And any standing water, it's just not worth the risk of not knowing what's under that body or that moving water. The roadway could be completely washed out and you drive right into it and not know any different. So anyway, we want to prevent that as much as possible. So just use caution and beware and it may make you have to travel 10 more minutes or 10 more miles longer, but it's not worth the risk. So please, take those opportunities to turn around and go a different route if you encounter that. And last but not least, we want to encourage everybody to participate with Code Red. This is a free service to city officers. I'm going to keep preaching it until those numbers start going up, so that you get that emergency call in the middle of the night to know what's going on in times of inclement weather. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Chief Steelman? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor.
We're now at a consent agenda. Any items council likes to pull off for separate discussion?
No, dear priest.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Action item, have a public hearing considering an ordinance nominating Longview Medical Center as to the office of the governor's economic development and tourism. Mr. Shirley?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, Mr. Bonds. This is a public hearing to consider an ordinance, as you stated, nominating Longview Medical Center to the office of the governor for economic development and tourism through the Economic Development Bank as an enterprise project. Basically, what that is, and if you're familiar with enterprise zones, enterprise zones are areas of the city that are designated by the state. They are the low-income census tract areas. They're designated every 10 years. Previously, the cities recommended their own districts, but that was changed about eight or 10, 12 years ago. That impacts us locally, like when we do economic development agreements through foray and such. And when we did the Dollar General, we had to create a special district because it wasn't in an enterprise zone. Well, through the governor's office, they have a state enterprise project. And what that allows qualifying entities to apply, it's a competitive process, it's an application, very much like the 9% tax credits. They only do so many a year. It's very competitive, it's a point system. But it allows them to apply to the state and receive, potentially receive a refund of state sales tax. And so, but in order to apply for that, they have to be recommended by the city. The city has to have an ordinance, either recommending it or an ordinance in place. Part of the process as well is incentives that the city may have available. And so we do have the ordinance, we are amending that list of incentives that are available. Those are not incentives that they're requesting, but they are available for these types of projects. Those are incentives that would have to be approved through other mechanisms before the council. And this is a project, we've done, I think, three others in the past. I think Trinity Rail, we did this a number of years ago. So as far as the city's benefit is, Longview Regional gets to apply for money, you know, back based on their projects that they're doing. I think they're doing about a $15 million investment into their CAF lab. And there's no impact to the city's tax. You know, we still get our city portion, they're not asking for any incentives, so it's win-win. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Shirley? We sure hope this goes through. Thank you, Mr. Shirley. This does require a public hearing, which is now open. Any speakers? Any cards? Any discussion? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
No, dear priest. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We're now to consider a resolution authorizing a memorandum of understanding between the city of Longview and Longview Arboretum. Mr. Karen?
Good evening, once again. For you is an agreement similar to the one that was presented to you last council meeting. And it's, we met with Mr. Metzler as well as Ms. Hugman to discuss all the particulars and make sure that all of the concerns were addressed. And so the agreement is essentially the same. So we'll just kind of run through the high points of what we had on there. There are a couple of changes and alterations that have been made and those are listed on the screen. And we had also sent those out to you guys previously. So as we move forward, we're going to take a conservative approach to allow the city and the Longview Arboretum to develop the facility and operate it over the next two couple of years, next year as it gets constructed. So we'd be happy to answer any questions that you guys may have.
Any questions, Mr. Karen? First off, I'd like to say, Mr. Karen, thank you for your diligence in this. I want to thank the Arboretum Board for their diligence and their patience, because I think when we, when we see the way this can progress and how we can come together in agreement, I think we will see a much better end product. And Mr. Howell, I just want to say to you, don't ever say you're not an arboretum kind of guy. You get labeled as somebody that doesn't like an arboretum, because I know that's not true, because you spoke in favor of it and I agree with you 1,000%. I've said that myself and I will never say it again. But I just, I'm just really pleased how, one word, collaboration. And I know sometimes it takes a while, but when we dot all our i's and cross all our t's, we'll all be happier about it in the long run. And I appreciate the patience involved with this process. It's been a long process, but it's been a process, I think, that will be beneficial to us all in the long run. So I thank you, and I thank you all for all the things that you all have endured to get to this point. So is there any discussion from council? This require, this doesn't require a public hearing. This just requires a motion.
Well, I will make a motion in just a second. But I will make a comment, since we had some discussion about it at the last meeting. And then, of course, if anybody else wants to make comments, I think that'd be great. But I just wanted to say thank you to the board, who has gone out and raised so much money and has been very patient. And I feel very good, and I would thank the mayor for his support, that we're all going to go in it together. Everybody is on the same page now, and we feel good about it. Arboretum is a big deal. And Jimmy, what, did you say we have to have your back, or we're behind you? Whatever you said. I am with you. I am behind you. I just want you to know personally, I'm committed to seeing the arboretum happen. I think that's very important for our city. And I think it's great that we can all move forward together. So appreciate everything that y'all have personally done, time-wise, financially. Everybody's so invested in it. I think you also said there's a committed group that is going to see it happen, and I believe that to be true. So thank you all very much.
Mr. Wright?
I just wanted to second what the mayor and Ms. Ishihara said. I thank you very much for your hard work, and I think this is going to be a great thing for the city.
Mr. Wade?
Yes, sir. My first comment. I've had a chance to get to know the board of Arboretum, and I think it's a great beautification process for our city. And I want to acknowledge them for all their hard work. I, you know, before I entered the council, I was a big fan of it, stood behind it. Publicly, I want to acknowledge that and acknowledge them as well, and wish them all the luck, and let them know that I'm here for them.
Thank you, Mr. Wade. Mr. Moore?
As I've said a couple of times, this is a perfect public-private partnership. We've had Leadco, the county, grant, city, the Arboretum Board. This is going to be an asset to our community and an asset to our quality of life. And I'm excited. We got to have faith, and this is going to happen.
Let's move forward and get it done.
Maya?
Well, we frequent the one in Dallas a whole lot. My son and my daughter-in-law were married there. And my grandkids, they visit that three or four times a year. So I've seen what this can do. And I'm, like Mr. Howell, I've never was an arboretum guy. But I was turned around, you know, eight or nine years ago because of that. And they do have a lot of, a lot of functions that go on there. And my grandkids just love it. And I think that it'll be a really, really good thing for our community. And I think that it, you know, I applaud the board, all of them. And I think that it'll be a really big asset to this, and I hope my grandkids want to come up here and go to this one, you know? So I look forward to it.
I will make a motion to approve the MOU with the arboretum and move forward.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We're now at the items of community interest. Mr. Moore?
Next Tuesday and Wednesday, the city is going to conduct a revitalization sweep and neighborhood cleanup for the Flamingo Mobile Home Park west of Pine Tree Road. This for residents of that area, this is going to be an excellent opportunity to get rid of extra bulky items, trash pickup at no additional cost. We will work with the residents of the area with any problems of junk vehicles, limbs, debris, discarded furniture. Our main goal is not punitive, to issue citations. It's rather an effort to work with the community to make it a nicer place to live. And I thank the staff for initiating this, and I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Ms. Snotty?
Good evening to everyone. I would like to, first of all, say thank you, Scott, for the update that you gave us regarding Hensley Park. To Chief Bishop, thank you for your presentation as well. It's always good news to hear that serious crime rates are going down. And to the gentleman on my left, I would like to say welcome to the council, the second half or the other half of South Longview. I hope that together, we can have a great impact. And I too, Mayor, remember him when he was a little tot.
Yes, we do.
Welcome.
We have seen it all. Mr. Wade, this is a time in our meeting when I get to ask you if you have any items of community interest you would like to spread with the rest of the community. And it's up to you.
Sure.
It's your time with the floor.
First off, I want to thank the mayor, Mr. Bonds, other council members for walking me. It's a great honor to be here. As everyone knows, I was elected by a group of people that got out, went to the polls and voted. Literally walked in on rainy days and voted. During my orientation, and as far as Mr. Wright's concerned, initiation process, Mrs. Shepherd offered to me over the next two years somewhat of a stipend or however payment for my role here with city council. And tonight, I would like to announce that I am donating that money to start an economic development initiative in District Three to build up our parks, to start a business initiative, to take over some of the empty lots in South Longview, to try to build some houses and bring businesses to that area. And so I'm starting off with that. You'll hear a lot more about it. But I look forward to working with everyone in that community and working for you. And so thank you for supporting me very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wade. Ms. Ishihara?
Yes. So just want to say welcome to Ray. Very excited to have you here. I think I have a video? Maybe? Oh, no. Well, it, well, that's a picture.
A good picture, though.
I just want to say thank you to everyone that came to my town hall meeting and to our city media group that came and took some video. This was my first joint Longview ISD and city council meeting. It was very well-attended. Seemed like people were more interested in what was going on with the school, which is great for me. It's an idea I copied from Ms. Snotty and Ms. Williams. I think they've been very successful in the past and goes a long way towards showing our collaboration, which we work really hard to do with the school district, with the county, and with the city. But the other thing that I did want to mention, which I thought was just really neat, one of the attendees came up to me afterwards and said, hey, seems like everything is going really great with the city. What am I missing? I said, nothing. Everything is going really great with the city. We have amazing projects like the arboretum and the green and our trails and those grants. So everything, I just feel very positive about where we are. So appreciate everybody that came to the town hall meeting. It's wonderful to have people come out and be engaged. I need your feedback. I need your thoughts. I need your comments on different things that we vote on. So thank you to everyone that's engaged with me at those town halls and in other ways.
Thank you. Mr. Wright?
Well, I too would like to welcome Ray. It's great to have you with us. I didn't know him since he was this big. But here about five or six years ago, our Rotary Group had a group of Japanese kids here. They came over every year for a while. And so I brought them down to the Longview High School. And this guy from Longview was speaking with them in Japanese, and boy, they're having a great time. Well, that guy was Ray Wade right there. So great to have you, Ray, and I look forward to it. The Spring Hill Education Foundation will be having a fundraising dinner banquet on March third. And Dag Nabbitt will be playing there. So if anybody feels like doing something out at the reserve on March third, we'd look forward to having you there.
Thanks, Mr. Wright. Mr. Pertle?
I want to welcome Mr. Wade, first off.
And then I want to thank all the Arboretum Board for their due diligence in staying with us and putting up with us. So anyway, I'm looking forward to that happening.
Thank you. Mr. Bonds?
Well, the Longview Municipal Court is offering a warrant amnesty program through March thirty-first. We encourage anyone with an outstanding warrant through our court, take the opportunity to save some money and get a fresh start. Please call 903-237-1186 for more information. Longview Parks and Recreation will host a Kids Fishing Day at Teague Park this Saturday, February twenty-fourth, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. The event will be, only be canceled if there is lightning. If canceled, an audio message will be added to the 903-237-1118 hotline. A Homeless Resource Day will be held on Saturday, March twenty-fourth, at Longview Fire Department Training Center. In a one day, at one place, a person experienced homelessness can enroll and receive services from multiple organizations. For opportunities to get involved, please contact Director of Community Services, Laura Hill, 903-237-1392. That's our service fair that we talked about from our homelessness task force. LBBA Boys Sign-Up Deadline is this Saturday, February the twenty-fourth. You can register online at longviewboysbaseball.org, go to TA Sports at 2547 Judson Road. LBBA is such an important part of our community, just like the girls' softball sign-up that Scott talked about. You know, my kids grew up doing baseball and softball. No, no, we've been through this. But get your kids registered. If you can't afford it, you come see us. We'll find ways to get those kids registered, because it's a great place to be in the summertime to get to be with their friends and their family. So let's promote that, because it's a great place, and we have great facilities to do that at. So I appreciate the opportunities there. Upcoming events? There are several upcoming events throughout the Longview community. Big Techs is a chance to peek behind the scenes at the amazing technology that makes Longview work. Take a free tour this Saturday, February twenty-fourth, at several Longview manufacturers, plus enjoy activities at our downtown museums. The tours are indoors, and will go on rain or shine. Longview World of Wonders will host Dr. Seuss's birthday on March second, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Spend the Ryming Wheel for $1.00 off of general admission. The Zonta Antique Show and Sale will fill Mont Cobb, March second to the fourth. Tickets are $10.00 and are good for re-entry all weekend. For those of you who have never been to the Zonta Show, you just should go to experience it. It's just a lot of fun. You see some unique people there. You see unique opportunities to look at things. And it brings people to our community. It's a great, it's a great economic development tool that brings people to Longview to see what we have and get to show off our opportunities. So thank you all for Zonta Club for doing that. For more information on any of these events, please check out the calendar at visitlongviewtexas.com. Or city events, visit longviewtexas.gov/calender. Survey time. Appropriate survey tonight. Do you think we should set a timeframe on the developers who wish to develop Hensley Park at their entire expense? Or will you be happy to accept any time they desire to build us a new park, ballpark, and develop the current Hensley into a retail space? Set time limits or accept donations wherever available? And I'll tell you, I'm, I guess I'm a little bit shocked at the, at the results. But I get it. Results, seventy-one percent say set a time limit. Twenty-nine percent say accept donations. But I truly think that's mainly because of the lack of information that's been provided. Because I think if you really look at it and look at the way we are approaching this, we have nothing to lose by allowing them to develop this at any point in time, as long as it doesn't interrupt what we're already doing. And we've already made that very clear. And if that opportunity presents itself to us, who would not love to see a brand-new park for our community at no cost? And see retail development grow and expand in an area that would be a phenomenal boon for our economy as well? That would be such an impact for us in both ways. And one thing I just got to say, commercial development, if you've never been in it before, it's a different animal than, than buying a home or building a home. It's a different ballgame. And so it does take time. And, you know, I'm encouraged that the developers are still encouraged to continue this process forward. They have really had some tough goes, not from us. Nothing to do with the city of Longview. Things are out of our control. But we, I'm really pleased that they're still in the game. And I hope they'll continue to be in the game. And I hope it works out for Longview. If it does, I guarantee you, we win if this works out. So thanks for taking the survey. I disagree with your results, but that's the way it goes sometimes. And it's all, it's okay. Okay, this is a fun one. How many different disciplines or events are there in the Winter Olympics? Ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five. The survey results were ten percent said, three percent said ten, nineteen percent said fifteen, twenty-six percent said twenty, and fifty-two percent said twenty-five. Okay, I'm going to be honest. I'm in that fifty-two percent. I think there's like a hundred of them. Because every time you turn on TV on it, it's something different. But events are like categorized as, okay, figure skating is one event, men's, women's, pairs, all that. It's just one event. The true answer is fifteen. There are only fifteen actual disciplines in the Winter Olympics, which blew my mind, because I have like curling and, you know, but it's, yeah. But it was fun. It was a good survey. I appreciate you all taking the time to do that. Next up, it is time for the scholarship. AmeriMax Scholarship will start now. So here are the requirements. You must reside in Longview, must be a graduating senior from either Longview, Halsell, Pine Tree, or Spring Hill High School. You need to get your application in by March thirtieth to longviewtexas.gov/scholarship. It's very simple. It's a one-page essay on what you think you could contribute or how you think you could make Longview a better place to live. And that's all there is to it. It's the simplest scholarship application there is. But I get some of the most incredible essays every year, and I truly look forward to reading every, I read every single one of them. And it's such a blast to see the mindset of seniors in Longview. It just blows my mind. And I am so pleased to announce, you know, I didn't say there are four $1,250 scholarships, because now there are four $2,000 scholarships. Because someone who wanted to be anonymous, who sits right next to me on my left, has also generously donated her stipend from her council to add to this scholarship. So now we'll have a total of $8,000 in the scholarship, divided by four, so the scholarship will go to $2,000 apiece, which I think is just fantastic. And Chris, and I appreciate you and you doing that. Sorry, I'm going to tell it anyway. So I do appreciate it, because it's service to our community. It's what it is. And so, but I'm not changing the name, it's still AmeriMax Scholarship, sorry. Until you top my number, my name stays on there, okay? So, but that's exciting news for our high school seniors, because $2,000 is $2,000. And it does make a difference. And I'm thrilled that we're partnering to do this as a community. So thank you very much for that. One more item, and then I will let you all go. You all have this at your desk. I don't know if you've had a chance to read it, because this is, this is kind of new information. But Laura Hill has graciously given us information on the upcoming homeless service fair and how city staff has looked at possible ways of spending some of the $250,000-plus or so dollars that we raised in the Go-Giver Gala. And if you'll look at this, $8,000 to purchase monthly bus passes from Longview Transit, which are desperately needed by our homeless individuals. This is something that they say over and over again that is desperately needed. And so I appreciate Laura and the staff looking into this. $4,000 to cover ID badges. I can't stress you enough how important an ID badge is to, an ID card is to a homeless individual. Without an ID card, they virtually cannot do anything. They cannot get jobs. They cannot do anything without an ID card. So it is paramount to get them involved, to get ID cards.